Hector, can you see that slide okay?
Hi Jordan, it looks great.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks for sending out that great video, Jordan.
And I'll thank you League of Oregon Cities for making that video.
I wish I had finished it.
There'll be a chance afterwards, no pop quiz, I promise.
Thank you.
Hector, it looks like the mayor is in the attendees, do you mind promoting her up to video view? Mayor, we're trying to get you up here. Hector, I keep clicking promote the panelist on my end. Maybe if you try on your end, it may work. Apologies all for the little technical difficulties here. Alright Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and just send you a new invite. Unless Hector magically makes it work in the meantime. Hector, can you give me a sign that you're there?
I'm sorry Jordan, could you repeat?
Yeah, oh, we're having trouble getting the mayor out of the attendee room. Oh, perfect, she's in. Praise Hector or the technology gods for that one. I was just clicking everything.
Sometimes that's all you got.
Alright, beautiful, welcome everyone. Mayor, let you get the party started.
So at this, right power of five forty-nine, I'll call the Talent City Council Study Session on May fourth to order. Roll call please.
Council Clark.
Here.
Councilor Ponemir.
Here.
Councilor Greider.
Here.
Councilor Pastizo. See Council Pastizo. Councilor Pastizo, are you able to unmute yourself?
Oh, yeah. Hi.
Hello, Councilor Byers. Councilor Perry Miller. And Mayor Harris Flood.
Thank you.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you Hector. Item number two on the agenda. Is it, is the agenda up? Yes, there we go. Is meeting accessibility, Hector?
This is a question for the public. Do any attendees need this meeting translated interpreted into Spanish? And I'll watch the attendees, Mayor.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is. Still trying to get myself situated, next screen.
Yep, it's a blink, but it will be the discussion of the use of ARPA funds.
Hey, staff report?
Yeah. Um, let me get into. I'm taking, and I gotta do a little early apology to you all. I have been under the weather this week and so sometimes forming quick thoughts and sentences might be difficult tonight, so I appreciate the patience in advance. Alright, can you all see that screen okay? Okay, let me get into presentation mode. Team, I'm showing you already how the struggle goes, okay. Tonight is about the ARPA funding that the city of talent has received. Looking for some just general direction on discussion on how we would like to potentially use those funds. So we can incorporate it in our draft budget for next year, which will then be presented to the budget committee as well as the council. So the city of talent has received about 1.47 million in ARPA funding. You know, and the purpose of this funding is to help mitigate the impacts of COVID-19 impact to our community. And we do need to obligate these funds, meaning we need to assign how they will be used by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four and actually spend these funds by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So we have already received half of the funds that we expect and we will receive the second half this summer. And we have spent to date about twenty-six thousand of those funds to buy a telegraph equipment since staff did not have laptops, be able to work from home. So we all worked from home during the Omicron surge. And then two for AEDs, we didn't have AEDs and facility facilities or police vehicles. And one of the impacts of COVID-19 is an increase in heart issues. Particularly since we have a generally older community, we wanted to make sure we had those equipments available. So tonight's conversation is really just to have an open discussion around general direction on what categories you would like to put ARPA dollars in. In particular for this fiscal twenty-three budget, which can then roll over into the fiscal year twenty-four budget as well. I'm gonna move to the next slide here. You know, I sent you all some prep material ahead of time if you had time to review exactly how the funds can be used. But I do wanna go over some basics with ARPA. And really, the easiest approach to ARPA is to first understand what it can't be used for. What can't be used for is a lot more limited than what it can be used for. Anyways, have any questions during this section of tonight's meeting, just go ahead and shout out or raise your hands and we can answer questions as we go. So our ARPA funds cannot be used to offset any reduction in net taxes due to any city policy. For example, if there, you know, was an urban renewal district, we couldn't use those funds to offset the money that went to the urban renewal district for the city services. We also can't deposit any money into pension funds. We are part of the state pension fund, that's not actually an option for us. We can't use the money to pay off any debt service, for example, we're currently paying a loan on our rap road reservoir. We can't use it for that and we can't use it just to really go into a savings account for us for future needs. Can't use it for litigation or settlements. And we can't use it to undermine any of the current CDC guidance, civil rights policies, or anything else that's kind of federally set. So very small piece of the pilot, we can't use it for. And then just some FYIs, we begin this conversation. Using ARPA funds to give loans to people or to businesses or organizations is doable, it's complicated but doable. So now, you know, grants are easier from administrative perspective than loans, though it's doable. And then two, you know, if we're using it for COVID-19 impact purposes, we need to be able to show proof or make sure that the organizations or individuals we're supporting with the funds are actually negatively impacted by COVID. Just, those are kind of the bookends that we're gonna be working within when we discuss ARPA. Any questions so far? Okay, beautiful, I'm gonna zoom in in here. So the city of talent partnered with SOU to do a survey to see really how is COVID-19 currently impacting our community, so we can start identifying some categories that we wanted to focus on. So the things in green are things that were either identified in that survey or we have seen through city data itself as negative COVID-19 impacts. The things in yellow are things that are, you know, regionally really high impacts to our communities, particularly rural communities. We haven't, didn't see these things in the survey. But we are aware of regional data that shows that food access needs have really increased. You know, childcare stresses for families has really increased and then healthcare access, of course, and public healthcare crisis. So I'm gonna walk through some of these identified COVID-19 impacts to kind of understand what those categories mean. So in the survey performed by SOU, and to, as you might see on the consent agenda, the survey was a hundred and point two respondents and it did skew towards an older population that did respond. But the two biggest ones were outdoor access and social connection to improve mental health. Those were by far and away the largest two topics that were highlighted as needs that they wanted the city to help address. You know, the other thing we're really seeing is housing stability, talent, over half of talent are renters. And we know that renters are particularly vulnerable during COVID. And then with the fire, we lost so much housing stock, we have even higher housing instability than we would have from the get-go. Utility payments, we have seen an increase in folks who have not been able to meet their monthly utility bills. And then of course, business support, businesses were hit hard by COVID-19, particularly specific industries that were based on tourism, recreation, etc. Food access, we really hear from Access, who is our food pantry provider, they have gone over two hundred percent more demand than they have pre-COVID. Childcare is really hard for families to access, particularly when school was shut down. And then of course, healthcare access, getting access to vaccines, testing, etc. There are many more COVID-19 impacts, these are just the major ones that have been coming across my desk the past eight months. If anyone wants to shout out and add others too, this is a working document, so I can always add notes as we go. I also wanna just recognize, as very clearly stated in the ARPA document, that some communities were impacted more than others. Some of the categories up on the screen are some of those particularly impacted communities. In ARPA, there is a section called disproportionately impacted communities. And by ARPA definition, those are communities that don't have to prove that they had negative impacts from COVID-19 because the federal government, the treasury is recognizing that they were impacted. Unfortunately, for administrative purposes, talent does not fall into those categories. So whatever program we put into place, we will have to write the justification of who we are supporting and why. General ARPA categories, you know, these are just the main headers of things.
Oh, go ahead. Can I interrupt? I couldn't find my hand button. I just wanted, so talent didn't fall into that, the, because of our size? I mean, I just, I was looking at some of those and I thought, oh, you know, we have older adults, we have Latino communities that don't have to justify anything that we could create programs for. But that, we can't do that here in talent, that that's meaningless to us as far as what we can do?
Yes, so these are definitely impacted communities, by definition disproportionately impacted, which the treasury separates from just generally impacted. The disproportionately impacted groups are QCTs. I think they're quintile census tracts, I always forget what the Q means, but we are not currently designated as a QCT. It is tribals, tribal regions are part of that automatic groups as well as US territories. And I can find that specific section in the overview that details what disproportionately impacted means.
Okay, so I mean, it's not like a, so, so in other words, in our thinking, we can't, we're, we're gonna, no matter who we deal with, we're gonna have to prove COVID impact, is that what you're saying?
Yes, if we give money to individuals, we'll have to prove it.
To individuals, but we can do things for the city as a whole without doing that proof, okay, thank you.
This is more for if we're giving money or support directly to an individual.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add that those QCT maps are available online, you can, you can find them online. There's some in Medford, I think.
So these ARPA categories are the, the broad categories listed in the rule. But there's also a subsection that is, if you can make the justification that it's a COVID-19 impact that you're addressing, there's probably a way to figure out how to make it work. But the treasury has identified these core areas as the most impacted from COVID-19. The new ruling, the final ruling that came out includes a section called government services. And this is to recognize the governments have lost revenue. And what it really means is that we could, if we wanted to, use these funds to help us provide any government services we're already providing. So we could technically use it to buy police vehicles or more police funding, we could use it to hire more public work staff. You know, if they're recognizing the governments were hurt, but they strongly recommend trying to use this for COVID-19 impacts in the community. So I just wanted to make you all aware of active projects right now that are separate from this ARPA, ARPA work. The state has set up a low-income household water assistance program. Where right now, if you make below a certain threshold, you get your utility bill paid for and you get any debt that you had on your account paid for as well. We have had a number of folks sign up here in talent and so they are currently enrolled in that program. We also just submitted this week that application for helping support our food pantries here in the county. Back in twenty nineteen, we received a CDPG grant to set up twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollar grants to businesses impacted by COVID. You know, there was really low uptake of that grant, we still have ninety thousand dollars left, and so we have extended that grant. And with the help of Talent Business Alliance and so ready, we'll be really trying to get the word out to get folks to sign up to get those grants. Of course, there is our state-sponsored vaccine and testing programs available that are still active in the valley. Okay, any questions on what ARPA can be used for, what we're seeing locally, questions or comments that any folks would like to make?
Uh, Councilor Ponemir, and then, and then I'll go.
Thanks, just a quick question on the, on the water, do you feel like what the state is offering is adequate to the needs of talent families?
For the water utility support? You know, I do, it's a program that pays the entire water utility bill for the family, there is no cap on it. And its access is currently running that program, it just went live in town less than a month ago. So we don't have strong numbers of how many folks will enroll. We did just send out a utility bill insert that any people know of the program. So I expect to see an increase in uptake, hopefully in June and July.
Yeah, I guess, my question is, do you think whether that would be, and maybe this is a question for future, whether, whatever threshold they're hitting is, is, you know, sufficient to take care of the need here in talent, so that.
That's a, that's a great question, I will record that and look at some of our data to see how much impact it has on late payments.
Thank you.
And then my question is. In the blue active, you know, the blue column active projects, we, we see some active project and, and when you listed those, was there any relativity to the identified needs on, on that list? And if not, is that data we could put together?
Yes, so I will say, and I can do it live now. So utility payments was directly, you know, the LEWAP program is a COVID-funded program that's intended to help relieve utility payment stress on low-income families. You know, the COVID-19 grants was specifically for COVID-19 business support needs. Now, we found that program design maybe wasn't the right design to help support what we have here in talent. So, you know, staff may think you all are definitely interested in, in other ways that we can support businesses with our ARPA funding. I do think there's a lot of unmet need in the business community with current programs. And then food access, the food pantry was really all about food access, increasing how much storage distribution and including mobile vans to help distribute food to the community.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
So, you know, unmet need is relative in some of these areas. Is there, do we have the capacity or the data to really look at, you know, the level of impact that the funds had on the active projects, or excuse me, the level of impact that the active projects have had on the identified COVID impacts, so do we have that capacity?
You're right, I think the issue is we don't have the data to even look at that one. For example, the LEWAP program is way too soon, there will be quarterly reports on the impact of that program. Run program. The CDVG's food pantry operations, we don't know if we've received that money yet. So that is an application that's been submitted, unaware if it's been awarded. And then the feedback, you know, I can give some qualitative feedback on the CDPG grant. It was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total, only of which sixty thousand were actually taken up by the community. And so I think that speaks for itself that it wasn't designed in the right way, when we know our business community was hurting. I shouldn't just say designed the right way, but I think it was difficult to access, little known, and it had restrictions on it around who could apply. With this second round, we are removing some of those restrictions to open it up.
Yeah, I, I asked that for obvious reasons, my hope is that in any possible way that we could really just try to quantify, maybe if it's even just in dollar amounts, I don't know. You know, who, who, what, what areas of impacts we, obviously, it's obvious which ones we had no support for, but then there's any more essential data that we can gather regarding unmet needs, I think that might be helpful, but maybe move. Alright, thank you. Member, I'm, excuse me, Councilor Greider?
Yeah, thanks, I had a question. Maybe falls along those lines with data that we have, but the food pantry, so I was sort of under the impression that a lot of that was, you know, that Access had their own separate, you know, funding for that, but have you heard from the food pantry that they're needing additional support, or do you have any knowledge on how they are doing, if, if that's a place that's needing more support?
Yeah, the food pantry is currently doing okay in their operations, they're able to meet community need. You know, the specific grant that we applied for, one thing they recognize is that they're very stationary, folks have to come to them for food access. And particularly post-fire, they recognize the need to be able to be more mobile for the community. So a large portion of that application would go towards creating another mobile food pantry. The other thing that this specific application we submitted is for, is they recognize that there's gonna be, you know, significant food supply chain shortages given the conflict in Ukraine. And so what they're gearing up to do is create more storage space, so they can purchase more food and have it on hand and stored in a, in a way that will help maintain it. Just to help make sure there's not those ebbs and flows that they expect over the next year.
Can I ask a question that maybe might be for both you, Jordan, and Councilor Greider? So, you know, food insecurity should always be at the very top of everybody's list and so I know that Rogue Action Center moved their kind of mutual aid operation into talent at one oh-two Home Street that expanded into a mobile unit, but then there's also services that they provide for the gateway, which is why they're here in our, in our community. Why, why they have that additional satellite office in our community. And is there a place where Rogue Action Center's mobile food operation, and I don't know enough about it to even know that I'm identifying it correctly, which is shameful, but do they intersect with access at all, and if not, is there opportunity there? Is that a reasonable question to ask in this format?
Yeah, I can, Jordan, do you want me to answer some of that, is that okay? Yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, um, so, the they, it doesn't necessarily focus on, although there is a lot of food supply involved, it doesn't necessarily focus on that. And when the Fire Relief Center was being run in Phoenix, there was a partnership with Access where they were delivering a couple pallets to us per week, but now, most of the supplies that are offered at the Fire Relief Mobile Events, with the one in talent once a month, is funding that the Rogue Action Center and Rogue Climate has for fire relief. And they are actually going and purchasing most of that food for those monthly or bimonthly events. And there is, though, I know some partnership with Access now that Access has their mobile pantry. In that specifically for the gateway and kind of getting them to come over this way with that access mobile pantry. But other than that, all of the, the Fire Relief events are supplied through funding that Rogue Climate and Rogue Action received, mostly through the Rogue Valley Relief Fund. And is not specifically food, although a lot of food is provided.
That's really helpful, I guess I just want us all to note that, that that's the case. And that collectively, we've heard, you know, that they're, they're serving, in general, we're serving over two hundred percent more than previous. And the last photos I saw of the pop-up event that RAC did was like the biggest attendance I've seen, and you know, whenever I see that kind of attendance, I always think more frequency or, or, you know, whatever, so if, if that folds into the discussion, I think, you know, the fact that RAC's brought their mutual aid organization to talent, if there's room for expansion, if it's needed, I think that should be part of the discussion. Anyway, it looks like Councilor Greider, do you have your hand up?
Well, I should have mentioned too, that the plans for those monthly pop-up events are only through September, and even starting in June, those will be evolving a little bit. That there may not be as much supplies handed out. There may be kind of a transition with the Long-Term Recovery Group in taking over some of that event as more of a community, they have some funding for community activities, whereas the other funding was specifically fire relief and that right now is scheduled to end in September, so. And that's, but that is a really the, the goal has always been and, and is that it's really low barrier, so while it's fire relief, it's, you know, open to those that need those services.
Thank you, that really helps me understand, or perhaps understand what buckets to fill as we move forward. Jordan, we hijacked your conversation, back to you, Jordan.
This is our conversation, so, more than good. So I'm going up here is just kind of what staff has brainstormed so, so far, so that we have a starting place for conversation. So I've got up here is just kind of what staff has brainstormed so far, so that we have a starting place for conversation. You know, of course, shout out ideas and thoughts as we go. You know, since such an interesting theme was outdoor access for our community, you know, staff recommends appropriating some funds towards capital projects to increase that outdoor access, you know, particularly the bike and pedestrian pathways that we heard really strongly in our citywide goal setting. You know, we would like to use some of these funds as backup for West Valley View project, which is currently slightly underfunded. Though we are still waiting to hear back from some grants that we've applied to. A very cool thing that the final rule also opened up for potential is it's now possible to use those funds to support the building of affordable housing. So we could use ARPA funds to, you know, use them for STC waivers or to encourage ADU development. You know, anything that helps build affordable housing, we can use our funds for. You know, and that helps with the, the housing stability issues and to a lot of the nonprofit partners that have been interested in building affordable housing. You know, the costs have been a really big challenge and they have named STC waivers as a, a really great tool to help them make their budgets work. You know, something I'm also interested in is a household support program. So we recognize that a lot of lower-income households need that utility assistance. But often, lower-income households are living in houses or apartments or homes that don't necessarily have the same well-maintained infrastructure. So there's often water leaks, there's often roof issues and things that can cost them more money in the long run in terms of the utility bills. And so setting up a program where we could help support reducing costs by repairing infrastructure. You know, another thing is COVID really impacts pulmonary and lung health. And so how, like, we could set up an air filter program, et cetera. Some sort of support program for individual households. You know, loud and clear that we're hearing not just in that COVID survey, but across our community, as community event supports. So it's setting aside some funds for community events. That's a big thing for mental health. You know, setting aside the funds for economic development. And of course, looking that new things will arise over the course of the two years. So often, these funds are flexible to move around and keeping a little reserve to address those. We are looking into our rate stabilization fund as another way to help support, you know, utility burdens on households. A rate stabilization fund is like a reserve we keep that we can use to offset potential increases in water rates to try to keep water utility bills low. I'm looking into if it's possible, you know, the issues that might count as a savings account that we might not expend by 2026. So that one may not be ineligible use. Staff considerations are just things that, you know, we're aware of a staff of our own limited capacity to support any detailed programs. You know, if we want to set up programs where we provide individual assistance to households, you know, it'd be great to piggyback on what Access is already doing so that we don't have to do the eligibility checks ourselves. We do need to spend this money in a certain timeframe. And also recognizing that this money, while it sounds like a lot, you know, there's high need in our community. And so if we set up programs now, I want to make sure there are programs that we can continue even after the ARPA funding rolls out, if it's a continued need for our community. And with that, I want to turn the mic back to all of you just to share your thoughts, make adjustments, and I will be taking notes on the screen as we go.
And my first comment is, hear, hear, staff recommendations, way to bring the thunder. I mean, these are great recommendations and really happy to see this coming out of, out of City Hall. Any, any hands going up, y'all? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, regarding the capital projects for increased outdoor access, you mentioned potentially backfilling the gap on Valley Views. I think you said, anything else? Any other projects specifically in mind in that category?
Yeah, I know there's been a lot of talk about play structures, increasing kind of the fun accessibility for our parks. It could also be used for increasing tree use in the city, which I know Counselor Clark is a great focus for our city as well. There's also a Creel Road project that's creating a greenway connection on the south end of town. We are short funding to do a fully ADA accessible route. But no, I've not earmarked or thought of other ones. There's a lot of projects we would love to do. But that would be, you know, for right now, we're looking for main categories and then throughout the year, we can determine if there's specific projects you want to move forward.
Thank you.
One comment I'd like to make is that I, I, this may be even unnecessary to say, but I would hope that we would really focus on allocating these funds that in ways that are not otherwise accessible, in terms of accessible funding. So, for example, when we're talking about trees, there are areas all throughout the city that do not have any funding for trees. And I, trees just happen to be a good example because we've been talking a lot about trees lately, but, which is a good thing. So in those, in those areas where if there's not funding readily available for stuff, that that's how we use the money and where we could otherwise use it with STCs or funds that are already set up for it, like trees and parks, for example, can be paid for through the parks, the increased funds. In other words, what I'm looking to try to accomplish, if we can, is to, is to make sure that we're not replacing any costs because we don't want it, we don't want to create, we don't want to diminish our ability to use this, but really be able to use it as, you know, use it where we don't have money, which will, which will optimize our ability to have the highest impact in my mind. So, yeah, and the other thing too is I'm, I'm hoping that in all of the areas that we, that we allocate these funds, that we do it through a planning process so that, so that we know where there's money and where there's money in the pipeline for things and where there isn't money and where there isn't money in the pipeline for things. And, and so we can really steer our spending in areas where we're not, we're not just simply replacing spending that we could get elsewhere. And the idea again is really just to optimize our ability to spread as many trees around the city or as many park or as, or as many STC waivers as we possibly can, you know, where, where there isn't otherwise funding. So thanks. Counselor Greider?
Yeah, I just wanted to just throw out there that I love the idea of the air filters. I know it's a small need, but it is a need that we've, through the, the Fire Relief work, have heard quite a bit. And it's just a real tangible thing that I think, yeah, I just, I really liked that you put that in there. It's kind of feels a little thinking outside the box and, but it is something that we've heard quite a bit from community members. We, there was, the Rogue Action Center was given 60 air filters and are, are going to distribute them to households, but that's, you know, such a small amount. There's, that's something that people are, are really wanting.
Member Byers and then Member Panamriff?
Thank you. Well, looking at the just utility payments in general and household support, I'm wondering if there's a way to expand that a little bit more to support bringing down or reducing utility, utility payments via a number of means that we could apply to that program.
Yes.
Sorry, Henry, just a clarifying question on that one. Counselor Byers? I'm assuming, for example, like we have the water leak repair program, but maybe plenty of gray rot or programs that people could reduce their water use?
You know me so well. I'm also thinking of things like helping people purchase LED light bulbs. Or is there a, a leak repair program for around doors or windows that can also help improve air quality during the winter and reduce heat utility payments? I mean, improve air quality in the summer and reduce heat bills in the summer, that, by winter. Oh my goodness, I'm having a hard time with my thoughts today.
You're, you're sounding pretty good to me. I love your ideas and your thoughts right now. Okay, was that, so, was that if, member By, or Council Byers? Okay, Council Panamriff?
Well, I think Council Byers is feeling the waves of synchronicity because I'm, I'm feeling a lot of that with what Council Greider said and what Council Byers said. So I really love this idea of household support, especially the, the communication aspect of it. So my understanding is that healthy homes, this is state money that's coming through Oregon Health Authority, is going to be in rulemaking for at least another year. And then there will be, you know, government, state money to improve homes in terms of the air filtration systems, all, all of that stuff, heating and cooling, both from an environmental perspective, from a public health perspective with an equity focus. There's also something I think come, that will be available as soon as this summer regarding air, getting air conditioners. And also, of course, the legality of renters can use air conditioning. This is, I think, a really, it would be really great timing for the city of Talent to start reaching out to our residents and identifying those needs and talking to them. Now, we might not have enough funds to go fix everything, but identifying those needs and also identifying the funding that's going to be coming down, I think would be a huge asset, a huge help to our residents, because I mean, most of the time, it's just finding out that these things are available. So that feels like a kind of a really timely and powerful investment that we could leverage. But what I really want to spend all the money on is an amphitheater. Now, I don't know how much an amphitheater costs, but I think that, that apart from that, I'd like to do some really cool outdoor thing, maybe that accessible play structure in Chuck Roberts. Yeah, something, something pretty and shiny.
Okay, and my follow-up comment is, in as much as possible too, I would like to see us partner with organizations that are already doing this work. For example, the Household Support. There's for, I mean, I'm just using this as an example. I don't know enough about it, speak intelligently about it. But there is an organization that does that kind of work. And I'm not certain of the name, but the city has done a really good job of amplifying their, their messaging. And, you know, so does it, it, it could make an awful lot of sense to just work with them and partner with them and share resources, because they might have a lot of that intelligence already built. And, and, and certainly they have the capacity and the human resource to, to do some of that work as well. So in all of these unmet needs, looking for ways, looking for ways to partner with organizations that are already doing the work. And then the other thing I wanted to follow up on is when we're talking about, you know, funding redundancy, like where there's park money, don't spend it on park stuff. The other place I think we should look for a potential for redundancy would be in the incoming HUD funding. So that $422 million has, you know, the draft plan is, is done. The first tranche of that money is going to come down by, possibly by the end of the year. And, and there may be a lot of funding available to cover some of these areas and then, you know, leaving this flexible enough where we can shift into a like use, but, but not trying to, everybody paying for the same thing, right? Piling all of our resources on the same, on the same efforts. So it's more than just looking at how, making sure we're not redundant within our own funds, resources, but then incoming resources as well. Okay, I, so Council Byers and then Council Clark?
This point goes piggybacking on what the mayor says. I would love to see some sort of like charts that is outlining what we have discussed in earlier prioritization discussions that are aligned with our vision and our goals. The work that we have discussed, asking to see the, the city projects that are, that can potentially help us get closer to a number of those goals and then where the gaps are that are being filled in by the various forms of funding. So we can just be really strategic about what we're picking and choosing for. I'd love to see that comparison. It would be so helpful to not have to hold that all in my head or pick through a number of really detailed agendas and tease that out.
Good point. And, and Council Byers, like I said, I was trying to make that chart before this meeting and time ran out, but I agree. So align whatever we decide with our, our citywide goals is very essential.
Thank you, Council Byers. And before I call in, Council Clark, I just wanted my, you know, hats off or shout out to Jordan for her mad organization skills before our very eyes, watching this, this all take shape. That's awesome. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, on the topic of community events, this reminded me that, gosh, it was, you know, two years ago at the beginning of COVID, we were talking about having some events and maybe closing off a section of Main Street, potentially on a first Friday. And, you know, could have a pioneering event and then build on that, you know, going forward. But I know that there would be certain costs, you know, to the city of, of closing a street and everything. And, and maybe this could go towards helping that kind of an event happen, because I think it could be something that we could build on in the future.
Counselor Panamriff?
Thanks. Just to add to that, I wanted to say music. That's one of the things that I think really helps to get people outdoors, but also with social isolation.
You know, to that, a great point. One of the things that Tom Corrigan used to talk about a lot is the impacts to these events to the city and how much it costs the city for them to shut down the streets, have police officers available, pay the fees. There was, you know, just a list of costs. And when we, when we actually got to see what it looked like, it was pretty, pretty significant. And one thing, I don't know if the city's allowed to do this, but if we are, you know, committing funds to support these community events, that we do it in a way where we take care of those expenses first so that we're making the city whole for the, for the drain on our resources. And that, that's, that just gives it, you know, it's, it's, it just continues to be useful money that way in that it pays down, it pays down those impacts that an event producer would have to pay. At the same time, the city doesn't have to, the city doesn't have to, you know, take deficits to their individual department head budgets in order to make that work. So I like that. Counselor Clark?
Sorry, I forgot to take my.
Counselor Greider?
Yeah, are these, these buckets, Jordan, is this like a recommendation that you for? I'm, I'm just feeling like the 50,000 in household support would go really quickly. And I guess just throwing that out there and, and possibly same with community events, I don't know. And I don't want to, you know, take funds from other, from different buckets, but yeah, that's just a thought that I had, that, that the 50,000 might go quickly for household.
That point, if we were going to take from a bucket, I think supporting affordable housing might be a place to do it, knowing that there's significant HUD funding that's already identified. I mean, I, that would be one thought. And then maybe capital projects too, in that a lot of times STCs, and I understand we do have, we have some reserves in our STCs or some, some, some high, high balances in our STCs. So those are two areas where we might be able to, I'd, I'd certainly want us to all look at that.
And I, and I have to be transparent with the room. So my leadership staff brainstormed these ideas. I am the one that forgot to. I am the one that forgot to ask what funding levels need to be. So that is a research area to identify is what is actual adequate funding for each of these categories?
This is a good place to start. Yeah. I mean, we're just brainstorming at this point. Counselor Byers?
Going back to the supporting community events, which is great, it like based on a number of conversations that have been floating in the ether recently, it sounds like some really cool things are coming back to talent or starting in talent. And so perhaps for the supporting community events, instead, we could compile a menu of support services the city could offer and look at what is already coming down the line for the next year or two and figuring out how we can amplify and support what's already happening and make those, those fewer things really, really amazing instead of adding more to the plate. And just being able to offer to any event planner, these are the potential things that we can add. What would you like? Here's what we have the funding for. I think that could be a really powerful offering.
Absolutely. And I admittedly have to dive a little more deeply into this community event category about what is justifiable through a lens. And it, so it may have to incorporate specific things like intentional outreach to the older community in talent for every event. That's also a great way to share what we do have to do for every event.
Making it really accessible for a variety of ages or something like that.
Exactly.
Which is incredibly valuable efforts, you know, so I'm it seems like there's probably no way to go wrong on, on this stuff. Anybody else? Well, it's six and we're getting close to meeting time. Jordan, is, is this the last exercise? Are we closing with this exercise?
This is, yeah, we will close after this.
Okay. Well, we have a little more time. If anybody is interested in some more feedback on this. Counselor Prestizo and then Counselor Panamriff?
Yeah, I just wanted to say this has been a great discussion and I'm glad to have so many people here with all these good ideas. I'm a little distracted tonight because of something else going on, but I like what I'm hearing and I just want to let people know that I'm, I'm bored with what's happening.
Well, I hope everything's okay, Counselor Prestizo, and don't hesitate to, you know, go absent if you need to. Well, we all understand, of course. Counselor Panamriff?
Thanks. I have kind of like, this is a little bit of a dumb question. I see a lot about broadband and they talked about broadband in, in, in the video. And it, you know, I know we have a couple of, of internet providers, service providers in the city. I also noticed that everybody's internet and talent is seems to be unreliable to some extent. And I also see the costs. I'm just wondering if there is a broadband, Nina, it doesn't have to be for these funds, but just general, I'd like, I'd like to i- if somebody could just tell me, or maybe we have to research it, kind of a diagnosis about how internet accessibility could be better in our town. And I think maybe one of the obvious things is, is helping to subsidize folks who can't afford the 50 bucks a month or, or whatever it is. But also whether there's a way to improve the quality of our internet in town and whether it's appropriate for a municipality to do that. So I'm, I'm curious about that because there seems to be quite a bit of money around for broadband.
Counselor Byers?
I don't have an answer to those questions, but this does align with what Counselor Panamriff said. Supporting the people who are choosing to build more densely on their lots, it can be difficult to have a hookup, I know from personal experience for the same internet provider for multiple households on one lot. And so perhaps that could also be something we could look into helping make that a non-issue, just to support you know, more people having the internet they need.
Counselor Greider?
I'm not going to answer the question very well, but Jordan, you might already know more about this than I do. There is support available for monthly internet bills where I think, I believe it's like a $40 credit a month if folks are already a part of like SNAP or subsidized lunches, any of those programs, they're automatically eligible for that. So that's just something that's, that I know of that, that is available for some folks.
My, my last thought is, you know, how I love dipping into any of the standing plans that we have to find, to find projects that we can do. And what I love even more is when we can find a project that doesn't have any dedicated funding sources. And what comes to mind would be like the Clean Energy Action Plan. If there's anything in the plan that we can check a box off in some of these areas that, that, that would, you know, would actually draw a line to this type of funding that would. But I, I just throw that out as an example. I know that we have other plans that don't have dedicated funding that if we could just ask our, ask our respective committees and commissions to just open up their books and work with their liaisons and you know, try to drop some ideas into this, that might be also useful. I don't know what your timeframe is, Jordan, or your capacity on this, but that seems like it might be a useful exercise. All right, it's
Sorry, I'm just do one comment, just so you guys all know the next steps of this process. You know, listening and hearing to feedback today, you know, the leadership team will work on some recommendations that we'll place into the budget for next year that will just put these in kind of general spending categories. And then throughout the year, we'll actually develop the programs or actually go forward to council to get approval for spending money, specific to specific projects. So that'll next come before you during the budget committee process in the next few weeks.
Right. I do see a hand up. We have a couple more minutes, so I'm gonna give John Norman a moment to to speak to the, to this item. John, we only have literally just a few minutes left, so if you can limit your comments. Should we bring him forward? Or ask him to unmute? John, happy to hear from you. Are you able to unmute?
Mayor has asked him to unmute.
Well, it looks like, did you bring him into our? Okay, looks like we lost him. All right, well, if there's anybody else, we have like about three minutes and I don't want to shut down this conversation.
Looks like John's back in the attendees again and in the panelists. So I wonder if he reconnected.
John, can you hear us? And if so, you can raise your hand. Here he is. Hi, John.
Hi.
Take your name and city for the record, please.
John Norman, France Pass.
Right. And you've got about two minutes.
Great. So the reason I'm here today is we're working on a project called the Oregon Steel. Sorry, that's something caught my throat. Oregon Steel Homes Project. It's designed to provide a solution for those people that possibly were in the fire. And one is a solution that would be different than the materials that are commonly used in home building. Here in Oregon. So our specific effort is to create homes that have a stick-built interior and then a cladding or covering that is made of steel.
John, I'm going to interrupt really quick because I, I believe we actually have this slated on the agenda for our regular meeting. This is just a study session tonight on ARPA funding. In about five minutes, we'll jump into the regular meeting and I'd love for you to speak there where the entire audience can hear you.
Oh, excellent.
And if there is, if you do want to make a point about ARPA funding, there would be no reason why you not to make it at that time as well. So you can just add it to your entire conversation. We're welcome to hear from you. Okay, with that, I, I'm going to bring this meeting to a close so we can get on to the next meeting. I do want to thank the staff for the incredible input. You guys gave us a great jumping off point and, and that's super neat. It was really interesting to watch this group spend 1.47 million dollars in less than, you know, 30 minutes. So well done.
We spent more than that.
Yeah. Wasn't it 1.47?
What we spent.
Yeah. You're right. Probably way more. Should we take a couple of minutes before we jump onto the next meeting? So I'll, I'll be looking for you guys to turn your screens back on to let me know when to start the next meeting. Okay?